Let's see, consideration of public review and approval of the County of Lake Homeless Housing Assistance and Prevention, HHAP Round 3 Application for $569,940, including a local homelessness action plan. With that, this is presented by the Director of Behavioral Health Services, Todd Metcalf, and I see he's here with us on Zoom, so we'll go ahead and give the floor to you. And I see Scott here, if you'd like to come up and join us at the front and take one of the seats, you can come up here as well, yeah. That way, if there's any questions or if you can guide us in any direction, if Director Matt Metcalf needs your assistance, we can go from there.
Yeah.
What was yours?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. My apologies for not being there in person, still having some vehicle issues. I'm stuck at home this morning. But I want to thank you for this opportunity for us to present this item. I know the Board memo is quite lengthy, there's a lot of information in there. You may be familiar with the Homeless Housing Assistance and Prevention Program, because this is the third round of funding for this program. So, we're here to explain a little bit more about it, and also to get approval, not only for our application for this funding, but also for the Continuum of Care Local Homelessness Action Plan. So, I see Scott, thank you for being there. Scott Abbott, our Mental Health Services Act and Housing Program Manager, is really our subject matter expert on this item. And so, with the Board's permission, I will turn it over to Scott, and I will be here to help if needed. But Scott, if you would like, take it away.
All right, Scott.
On?
Yes.
Okay. Good morning. So, you're probably aware that the Governor's Office and the state legislator have been trying to address homelessness in California for the last few years. One of the hallmarks of that effort is the homeless housing assistance and prevention programs that have existed. Round 1 was a few years ago, they are issued to both, or to counties and large cities, and also to local continuum of cares. Lake County has received funding for that in the past, and has used it mostly for our local shelters that we have, present. This is Round 3 that we're receiving this year. There's also been approved Round 4 for next year. This year, as the memo says, it's for $569,940. It will be coming for the county. One of the requirements of that is to have, produce a homeless, a local homelessness action plan. That was provided to you, and the main thing that we need to do, according to the regulation for this, is for the Board to approve it, and to receive any kind of public input on that plan, that we can have. The plan is also shared with our local continuum of care, and it's been on our website for the last about two months, to receive public review. The continuum of care has also reviewed it and approved it about in June, and so it's now being brought here for your approval. The main parts of the plan, or let me first of all, the plan was developed based on previous homeless action plans, or not action plans, but just homeless planning plans that have existed, which you probably, or you may remember, such as we've done one for the No Place Like Home grant. There's the community development department's housing element, there's the Continuum of Cares Strategic Plan, and so, you know, kind of all those pre-existing plans have been utilized to develop this plan, as well as, you know, receiving input from and feedback from local housing experts, providers, and also interviewing people that are homeless, what needs do they feel would be important. So, you know, a lot of kind of public input has been provided for in development of the plan, and existing plans, or previous plans. And so, this particular plan, you know, takes those into account, and its main things, three are the three components are to, one, describe what our county is like, what our homeless situation currently exists, what are the demographics of our folks that are homeless, which has largely been based on our previous point-in-time counts, as well as some other sources of information. And then the last component is dedicated to what we're looking to do with this funding. And that, the last part is, as mentioned previously, is 10% will be used for youth services. So, we'll be most likely combining that with the continuum of cares, funding and produce a request for proposal and how to use that. Then the other part, I don't have it written in front of me, but the $400 and some thousand dollars, we plan to use for the Collier Avenue project, which I know you're familiar with for a number of times, and we requested to use that. The funding and the grant fit the goals of the project, and the project frankly needs the funding to keep it viable. And so, that's essentially what the plan is.
Todd, did you have anything else to add, or?
No, Scott, you covered it all, so thank you for being there. Again, sorry, I'm stuck at home.
No worries. Any questions? Supervisor Sabatier?
Thank you very much for this. Couple of questions. One, just right off the bat, it says here, Round 3 Application for $569,940. I thought it was two pots of money, and the first one was $569. Should we approve for the 1.1 million right now? Because as you read deeper into it, Round 3 is two different pots of money that they speak of, like one is the $569, and then one is like $640 or six something.
$610, $610. Yeah, so, good question. So, the way it's structured, as I mentioned earlier, is this funding goes to both counties and also to the COC. And so, the COC received the $610,000, and the county receives the $569.
But are we the ones that are, because this is to approve submitting so that we can receive the Round 3, this is to approve the application submission, so the money amount doesn't matter, it's just the approval of the application, and out of that, we receive the $569 and the $600?
Right.
So, we don't need to speak necessarily about the funding when we do the approval?
Right. The nice thing is, it's allocated, it's not competitive, they just have it set for us of what we can receive, and of course, we're going to ask for all of it.
Okay. And then, I was reading through the action plan, and I appreciate that being shared with us, and there's a few things that stand out to me that I wanted to talk about. We use the 688, 1.5% of the population, which is the standard that I don't know if it's federal or state tells us to utilize. We claim that that seems to be close to our 2018 pit count, but I also know that the following year, and the following year after that, the pit count's been really a whole lot less than that. Obviously, it's difficult to always have a perfect count, so it's a count that comes with a grain of salt. But just kind of curious if we're over-setting our expectations by utilizing a large number versus maybe averaging out between the numbers that we have found in our pit count, because it makes us believe we have so much more work to do, which is difficult to be able to provide the services needed to get to the results we're looking for, our goals. So, just kind of wondering if 688 is the right number to use, since it's just the basic state standard that is commonly used versus the number, because I think we put out a good effort in our pit count, and I think that we've learned and we've done better to try and go to the people rather than ask the people to come to us, just because that makes sense. And just kind of curious if we're over-setting our expectations?
Well, I think it was-
I worry that we're over-setting our expectations.
Not sure how to answer that exactly, other than, you know, the numbers are set, you know, based on pit counts and, you know, estimates, because it's really hard to kind of nail down what our actual number is. You know, it really varies depending on the source of information that you look at. You know, the pit count is done on one day, as you know, and if you miss people, you miss people. But there's also, you know, the Lake County Office of Education, with their, you know, the students and the families, and there's a considerable amount that lists themselves as homeless. And then there's Partnership Health Plan, which oversees Medi-Cal, and they also have a count, you know, based on that. And it also shows a high number of people in Lake County that are homeless, and they're all, you know, a little bit different. So, it's always kind of hard to kind of pin that number down, and so you just kind of go with what you can.
Is there a way to average it? I mean, if you all are working together with those numbers, maybe do it some sort of average, so we can have a baseline, maybe?
Well, you know, but they're all kind, it's a little bit of apples and oranges.
The definitions are different.
Right. The definitions are different, which is really important. How they're done is important, you know, the pit count is one time versus, you know, entire school year versus, you know, anyone who signs up for Medi-Cal. So, they're all kind of, you know, different measures, and so it's kind of hard to kind of like average that, other than to say that we have an issue of homelessness in Lake County.
And I just wanted to bring it up, because it's something that stood out to me. It's hard to get that right number, but it just seemed like, I remember one pit count was very high, and then it went back down, and it seems like we're utilizing that high number. I will also, just as a statement, not a question, I worry where the state is going with their definitions. I feel like we're asking behavioral health to become social services, because now, the definition of homelessness is at risk of becoming homeless, and at what point is social services supposed to do their portion of the work, and when are you supposed to do your portion of the work? There's a lot of blending that's happening, and I think that the definition becomes very, it becomes such a wide net, that it's no longer what you and I maybe would think homelessness is described as. So, I think it's making your job more difficult in the direction that the state is going. The other part was, there's a lot of goals, there's a lot of measurables that are provided within the goals to try and meet, but we're on Round 3, and I don't see data from Round 1 or Round 2, and I want to make sure that we're learning from Round 1 and Round 2. And I'll just provide an analogy. I want to make sure that we're not doing something which works today, but when we're done, and Round 3 is no longer there, and we're no longer accessing these funds, that we just end up in the same place we started before Round 1. The analogy I have is what we did in Clear Lake, where we set some money aside to grade roads every year, and somebody said, "Well, if you do that for 20 years, and you spend $10 million, you end up $10 million later with dirt roads." You didn't actually enhance anything, you didn't progress to a better place or a better environment. I want to make sure that we have the data from Round 1 and Round 2, and that we're utilizing that data to best understand how to utilize this Round 3 funding, to really have that long-term impact, rather than what may appear to be an impact, but maybe the data shows otherwise. So, do you have that data? Is that data accessible, and would it be shareable with us? Because it's not within the action plan, and it's not within the data that is on the side for the, whatever, that spreadsheet that you sent me, but it's also part of the attachment.
The data tables.
Yeah, the data tables. Just curious if we have that to be able to rely on it, to basically make sure we're learning and progressing to the next step.
We are definitely working on that. I can answer this a couple of different ways. HHAP in the past, Round 1 and Round 2, for both the county and the COC, it's, you know, hundreds of thousands of dollars, but not an incredible amount. I mean, it's not enough to go out and build housing or things like that. And so, what it's primarily has gone to, has gone to emergency shelter, which is, you know, kind of like looking at, it's putting out the easiest fire, and you can do that with an emergency shelter. It doesn't, unfortunately, it doesn't, you know, do a lot of long-term things, but it does help people get off the street. And so, that's where the funding has gone, and that's why we have, you know, both the Elijah House Shelter and Hope Center have received probably the majority of that funding. And so, the results, you know, of having those two shelters is, you know, where that funding has gone. And indeed, you know, we do have, you know, how many people have been sheltered, how long, you know, that type of data.
I'd love to see that data. I think it'd be really important for us to see that, so we can see the progression, see what works, see what doesn't work. And then my last piece is something that stood out to me, and that was, at the very beginning, when it summarizes the funding opportunities, and it talks about, and I can't see it right here, I'm not going to continue looking for it, but it talks about Collier Avenue. And we've had a long conversation about this, and the last time we had a conversation, we did an MOU with RCHDC, or whatever their acronym is.
You got it right.
And we finally got a little bit more level of detail as to what that facility, or what that housing project looks like, and who will be invited to be the tenants. And I went back to the video to look, and it was a total of 40 units, 19 of which would be No Place Like Home, 10 of which would be Redwood Community Services, and 11 which would be low income. But when I read through the plan here, it's 100% is for mentally ill and homeless, and so I'm kind of confused as to where that project changed, and if there's an explanation for why in this, unless it needs to be changed. And again, I wish I had it right in front of me, I'm going to keep looking to see if I could find it real quick. But why does it not state the same as it did before?
Well, this is a piece of the overall funding. You know, there's the No Place Like Home grant, which is being utilized. This particular grant, we're also using the PLHA, which, I totally forgot what that was, but that was brought up here a few weeks ago. And so, there's kind of a number of different funding streams that are going into that. This particular one, I guess is, you could say is dedicated more toward the mental health, behavioral health embed part, although-
So, I'm going to read what I was seeing. It says, "That funding was recently formally allocated to the proposed Collier Avenue project, a permanent supportive housing project to be constructed on a county-owned parcel in Nice. About one-half of the units," which is what we were told, "will be reserved for the chronically homeless, mentally ill. Remaining units will be occupied by developmentally disabled adults. The NP, the No Place Like Home funding is allocated towards the chronically homeless, mentally ill portion." And so, it feels like we're talking about the entirety of that housing project, but it also doesn't fit the last description that we-
Yeah, I understand.
So, I'm trying to make sure that we're-
What RCHDC does, they take the funding that we're providing, you know, those three different grants that I just mentioned, and they're using that to leverage tax credits, which helps fund the entire. And they're, you know, as you know, experts at doing that, they can take $10 and turn it to $100 by doing that. So, that's their specialty, and so they'll take, you know, this type of funding, these grants, which is, you know, the real dollars, and be able to leverage more from it, to fund the entire project.
And I get it, what RCHDC does, and thank you for the answer, I appreciate it. I'm going to turn to Director Metcalf. Is there a change in the description of the project on Collier Avenue? Because this doesn't match the previous project description.
No, there has not been a change, Supervisor Sabatier, and as Scott was articulating, because there are so many different funding streams, it might look funny that this particular funding stream is, yes, dedicated to folks experiencing mental illness, but because the project is receiving funding from so many different sources, the demographic that's being served there has not changed. But this particular funding stream is, yes, dedicated to folks experiencing mental illness, but it's a piece of the whole funding puzzle? If that helps or makes any sense?
And maybe it's me, I just feel like I'm not, maybe I'm not communicating properly, but I'm reading two separate descriptions. I would love to have this action plan, if we're going to approve this action plan, which is what we're being asked to do, that it meets the same description that we were provided, which was 19 No Place Like Home, 11 Redwood Community Services, and nine low-income housing, because the idea is, we're building low-income housing that can fill this, but here, it gets rid of the low-income housing, and it, in my opinion, becomes a facility rather than a housing complex, if the entirety of it is made for chronically homeless, mentally ill, and developmentally disabled adults. And so, that's why I asked those questions specifically last time when we did the MOU with Collier, I wanted to understand what exactly were the, what was the intent of the tenants to move in? And also, I asked the question, if you remember, if we don't have those rooms filled, can they be filled with those who are seeking housing that are low-income? And the answer was yes, that it can be changed. I was provided the example of the farmworker housing in Lakeport, that that was changed, and so I agree to that, but this description does not match that. And in my opinion, we approved an MOU with those statements made, I'd like to change the current No Place Like Home program status to match that description, or else maybe we need to come back and have another conversation about the Collier Avenue as to the change of description, because I think that somewhere in my mind, I'm thinking a facility goes through a certain process, a housing project goes through a separate process, because we talked about the CEQA process, or the public comment process, and things like that. So, that's the only reason I bring it up, just because there is, it just caught me off guard and felt like something had changed.
And just for a point of clarification, the residents, they are not Redwood Community Services clients, they are Redwood Coast Regional Center clients.
I apologize for that, there's too many RCHs out there.
No, I just wanted to make sure that that was understood.
It looks like Linda has her hand up, I didn't know if you wanted, Linda on the Zoom call? I don't know if she's a part of it.
Yeah, that would be great. Linda actually was the author of this plan.
Okay. Linda, I see your hand up, if you'd like to unmute.
Hi, I think I, I think I'm unmuted?
Yep.
Hi, Linda Hedstrom. I helped write that homelessness action plan. Sounds like there are a lot of questions about it. There's a, because of previous discussions on homelessness and what the pit count is or isn't, I put quite a bit of detail at the beginning of that plan on the different official definitions of homelessness, and you can see how the pit count is, you know, a very specific look at a certain kind of homelessness subpopulation. And so, that number is going to be different than, you know, as Scott has explained, any other kind of homelessness definition, such as, you know, the schools district looking at its homelessness numbers, which is also defined by that exact same code in HUD. HUD just very specifically says, there's this kind of homeless population, there's that kind of homeless population. And depending on the funding source and the particular need, you will, you know, use your own homelessness definition as allowed by HUD. So, there's quite a bit of detail. The numbers for this hap, H hap, application don't particularly, particularly matter, because we are looking specifically at, for the most part, the Collier Avenue project, as opposed to the COC's application, which goes after a wide variety of homelessness needs. Collier Avenue is 100% a supportive housing project. By state statute, only 49% of the units, or in this instance, 19 units, can be specifically reserved for the chronically homeless, mentally ill. That's not to say that other units couldn't be occupied by the same population, but because of the funding sources, as Scott and Todd explained, we're looking at other people who meet the low-income homelessness or at-risk-of-homelessness definitions. The developmentally disabled people do need supportive housing, and RCHDC did arrange with, with the developmentally assisted agency to help their clients with this housing project. If for whatever reason, as RCHDC explained in a past meeting, probably with the PLHA funding, if we had units available to other people, they would also still have to meet the funding requirements. So, they would have to be low-income, and there are different levels of that in Lake County, depending on family size, and depending on which unit they were going to go into, whether some units were assigned to specific needs, they would have to meet the requirements for those specific units. But the entire project is considered at this point a supportive housing project for the low-income, with 49% of them reserved for the chronically homeless, mentally ill, which is totally within the wheelhouse of Behavioral Health Services. Now, Todd and Scott also are the administrative entity for the county's community action agents, or excuse me, Continuum of Care, and that Continuum of Care is responsible to assess and attempt to meet the homelessness and at-risk-of-homelessness and homeless prevention activities for the county. And that's why behavioral health is out of necessity expanding into other homelessness and prevention activities. But for this specific application, we are dealing with most of the funding being directed towards Collier Avenue's supportive housing for their clients, and the, by California statute, 10% of that reserved for meeting the needs of the homeless youth, as Scott explained, going out to RFP, and probably being combined in that RFP with COC's required 10% set aside for youth homelessness.
I appreciate the level of detail, just seems every time we have a conversation about Collier, there's more detail. So, I guess that's where we are. Thank you.
Yes. Just wanted to highlight, I appreciate the questions that you asked Supervisor Sabatier, I had a lot of similar questions, and you mentioned and answered one of mine as well, because I was going to ask, how are we currently serving the homeless population? And you mentioned Elijah House and Hope Center. However, I know, I think I'm familiar with Elijah House, they're not going to be serving further than September in regards to the facility in Lakeport, so is this something that's going to help with that? I'm not sure how that will, you know, look from here, or?
This particular opportunity is permanent housing, which is really hard to come by, as you know, here in Lake County. And so, that's why we're taking full advantage of that opportunity to do that, with a limited amount of funding that we do have. We do plan to, the COC is, wants to continue having a shelter in the North Shore area, and so we currently have an RFP that's out there to continue that.
Okay.
But it's not related to this particular fund.
No, this funding has to do, obviously, with Collier, right?
But just for your information, for the RFP, we're using funding from the COC's Round 3 of HHAP, and then the county's Round 2 of HHAP.
I see.
To help support that. To help support that.
And I seen that in the memo description and some of the plan. And for me, I really wanted to see a lot more further breakdown of some of those fundings that were spent in HHP2 and whatnot. I seen some of it here and there in the actual data tables. That helped me in some instances, but I just wanted to see a further breakdown of how some of that funding was spent. It would have helped me a little more. So I just wanted to highlight those things, but.
We can definitely do a presentation for you about, you know, what the efforts have been so far and where the funding has gone. That would be helpful.
Supervisor Simon?
So I appreciate all the detail, the conversation that we've had, but I know Supervisor Sabatier have, you know, a specific request on changing that language to look the same as what we approved before. And, you know, so I'm going to pose the same question. If we change that language in this homeless action plan, is that going to affect the funding? That's really a question I have. Is that going to be a big change? Because I didn't hear that answer. Or maybe it did come back. It was just a lot of talking that I didn't get a yes. Well, you know, we can make that change, so.
I think we can make that change.
And then still approve the action plan and still.
Yes, this is the clarification is what you're essentially asking.
Yep.
I'm looking, if we approved an MOU, which we did on April 19th, I think it was, either we approve this as is and we change our MOU, because our MOU said something slightly different. So I'd like this to match.
Yeah, okay. We can do that.
No, this, yeah, we could certainly make an amendment to it. And yeah, that shouldn't affect any of the funding.
Right. The reason we're here doing this is we're looking for public input, including your input. So that's.
And just to clarify the statement that I, that we heard, these services fit within low-income, so if we say that there's nine units for low-income, then it changes nothing because those services are still seen as fulfilling the low-income category.
Right.
Correct, correct.
Right. Yeah, and HHAP funding in itself isn't, you know, by regulation, isn't meant just for those of mental illness. You know, it's meant for anybody who's homelessness, who's experiencing homelessness, sorry.
And I think one last thing I have is that, one thing I know about Collier is it's been potential, not only for the county, but it's been a potential for another agency back in the early 2000s for a youth center at one time, and that never came to fruition. And I'm confident and hopeful that this one will come to fruition with Collier. However, if it doesn't and we've received this funding, what happens to that funding? Does it go back to them? Do we use it in some other way? Do we appropriate?
If something like that happened, we would, again, come up with something that would fit within the grant's requirements and of course, bring it back to the board.
Okay. Any other questions or?
What I'm going to ask in my motion is to match the MOU and also a request for the data from round one and round two to come to us when you have it gathered and collected.
And we can, we can report on other funding which has come in too.
Ms. Grant, did you have something to add?
I was just going to suggest for purposes of clarity that when you say match, that you're as specific as you can be as to what's going to appear in which document and the type of language that you expect to see. That way there won't be any miscommunication after staff leaves your board meeting.
I would request that we come back to this item so that I have the chance to review the April 19th MOU and make sure and work with Ms. Grant to make sure that we are correctly adding language and not just.
So at a later date.
Making a statement that may not be what it is that we're looking to get.
Later date or later today?
Later today, if it's possible. Because I know we have some people in the audience that are waiting for a specific item. And I think that after a 10-minute break, I'm sure we can figure that out.
All right. So would you like to take a break right now then and go from there or?
It's up to you if you want to keep going. I know Mr. Abbott is here and probably wants to get back to his office.
No, I'm fine.
So it's up to you, Chair.
Taking a break.
All right, let's take a 10-minute break and come back to that and then move forward Welcome back from the break. We will open it up for public comment. I'm not sure if I did, but I will in case there is any. I know that that was one of the main purposes that I know Scott had mentioned was to ensure we got some public comments on this item. So is there anyone in the chambers that would like to? And if so, please come to the microphone, state your name for the record and you will have three minutes. If you're on Zoom, raise your hand and then we'll unmute and you will have your opportunity to speak. It looks like we don't have either or, so I'll bring it back to the board for action. Supervisor Sabatier?
So Mr. Chair, I'd like to offer what the amendment will be. I am looking at, I am on currently page five of the PDF for the action plan and the actual page number is four, if you had it printed out. It is in the section called Current NPLH, No Place Like Home Program Status. If you go down to the sentence after the large 557,000, it says that funding was recently formally allocated to the proposed Collier Avenue project. At that point, I am going to offer to cross off a permanent supportive housing project and change it to what the MOU says, which is a affordable housing development, which is what we approved, located, to be constructed on a county-owned parcel in Nice. And then the next sentence would be crossed out, which says about one-half of the units will be reserved, blah, blah, blah. And then remaining units will be occupied. So those two sentences can be scratched out. And then I will offer to add the two whereas's in the MOU that we signed on April 19th, and I'll read them out loud right now. It says Rural Communities Housing Development Corporation proposes to develop and provide property management services for an affordable housing development consisting of one and two-bedroom units and an unrestricted three-bedroom property managers unit. The NPLH, No Place Like Home assisted units will be dedicated to house adults 18 years or older with a serious mental disorder, as defined in California Welfare Institution Code, Section 5600.3, that are eligible as target population under the No Place Like Home Program, California Welfare Institutions Code, Section 5849.1 through 5849.15. And then also add the total household income at the time of move-in for the No Place Like Home assisted units shall not exceed 30% of the area median income limit as published by the California State Department of Housing and Community Development. That way it states what the MOU states and it corrects the language instead of supportive housing development, that it's an affordable housing development that provides units for NPLH. And it did not have any further description within the MOU. We did verbally speak to those further descriptions, but since it's not in writing, I do not want to offer that for that change. But at least it now provides a cohesive homeless action plan regarding Collier and the MOU that we also signed regarding Collier. And I did speak with County Council, Ms. Grant, and that seems to be an appropriate change. I do want to ask staff to make sure that those changes, same question as Supervisor Simon asked, do those changes have any impact on the receiving round three?
No. No, and in looking at the eligible activities list, I would certainly say affordable housing falls under the category of delivery of permanent housing. So I don't believe there will be an issue with that at all.
And that aligns with what Ms. Field was telling us as well, that it's all within that same category. So I.
Yeah, so you just added some clarification, you know, and make a match.
Yes.
So that's fine.
That way there's a consistency in what we're talking about and saying, especially in writing. If there's no further discussion, then I move to, what am I doing here? Approve the County of Lake homeless housing assistance and prevention round three application for $569,940, including a local homelessness action plan with the amendments as stated.
Second.
I have a motion to end a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Oh, and wanted to just consensus, if we can get that data from round one and round two, that would be great.
Yes.
Well, actually, we'll give you a background, not that funding, but also other funding that we received too.
That would be great.
Would the board like that to be like in the form of a formal presentation or just send an email? How would you like it?
I'm going to leave that up to the Chair because that all takes time. And at this moment in time, I'm just wanting to have a better attention to the funding that we receive and the progress that we're actually making when dealing with our, those experiencing homelessness.
You would like to see it come here or?
Yeah, I think coming here, if we can get it on an agenda, I think it's a good item.
Yeah, well, yes, we'll look for that in the near future and we'll work with you on a good date for that. And so we'll just check in with you and see where we're at with it.
Okay, we've got some good data to share with you then.
Thank you.
Awesome.